We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda tonight is review and approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Anybody have any corrections or additions? If they'd be kind enough to give them the link, otherwise I would accept a motion to approve.
Motion approved as written.
Motion have a second?
Seconded.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Composed. Past the minutes. Next item on the agenda this evening is our public hearing on a comprehensive plan. I guess before we get too involved, Brad, you're going to give us an outline summary of where we are?
Yes, and I will make it very much an outline summary.
Do you want to copy this?
Sure. Hopefully between, oh, it's surgery. You've got access to take a peek at. My name is Brad Schib. I'm consultant with Boynton Cogler Group. We're the lead firm working with WSPS near Sydney, near Brandon, to update the city's comprehensive plan. As you mentioned tonight, it's a public hearing with the planning commission to hear comments from the public. We did have materials here for the last hour prior to the meeting. We had a few people come in and provide some comments. So I'm going to give you kind of a high-level overview of the plan document and then talk about some of the comments. What we're seeking from the planning commission is probably one of three actions. One is to recommend to the city council as a recommending body to move the document forward unchanged, or you may recommend to move the document forward with changes that we may talk about here. Or if you feel like there's more time needed to absorb this, it is a lot of content in here and more time to discuss it, you can certainly discuss it and table it to a future meeting. So those, one of three actions that we're looking for tonight. Ultimately, it is the city council's responsibility to take action and formally adopt the comp plan. So at their subsequent meeting to this, I think June 13th is when we're targeting, we will be putting the plan document in front of them for formal approval. Let me give you a quick overview of the comp plan. Again, as I mentioned, comprehensive, it's a lot of information in here and a lot of content. And so I don't expect everyone to have read every single component, every single line and paragraph in here, but there are some important components to this that are worthy of discussion and worthy of absorbing and understanding what they mean. So the comprehensive plan is a physical document that looks at a 20-year planning horizon. And so for this particular case, we're looking out to 2040, just for around the sake of numbers. While I say 2040 and 20 years, that's a long ways out, it is a plan document that's not meant to be a static document. And so comprehensive plans do change. What this provides is a foundation and a structure for how you evaluate that change. And so while we say it's a long-term plan, it's not a static document, it is dynamic. The plan document is broken into a number of chapters. Throughout the process, to get to this plan document, we have engaged the community in a number of different places. And you can think about the content that's in here from an introduction. We began the process by explaining to people what a comp plan is and having, if you will, a visioning session to help us understand what are the issues and challenges faced in this community. We did that through a couple of different formats. I know I've seen a number of faces here. At the first meeting we had at the school, where we laid out a game board and we asked people to go around the city and tell us what's important to them, what's working, what's not working. We also had an online mapping exercise. It was called social pinpoint, where people could go on and provide comments, and I've had a couple of comments here tonight in our open house period that references, reference back to some of the comments that were put into that online mapping session. So the initial chapter of the plan is introduction. The second chapter is community context. That community context is that snapshot in time, the picture of what the community is today. And it kind of reflects on some of the things that we heard from the public in terms of the issues and opportunities that the planning process presents. The third chap, third chapter is vision and guiding principles. Vision and guiding principles were derived based on the input that we received, the discussions that we had, the comments that were brought forth, as well as some of the past planning initiatives. And so some of the places in the document refer to past planning projects, including the comp plan, which was last done in 2011. It includes the Highway 14 study that was done prior, prior to that time, provides some guidance that is still relevant today, and other initiatives that the city has been going through, including like the safe routes to school and more recent initiatives. And so that vision and guiding principles section, which starts on page 3, 1, really gets at where's the big picture? What's the direction that the community is going? We drafted a statement and a set of guiding principles. In the next round of engagement, we presented that information. We said, tell us what you think. A little bit of wordsmithing, a little bit of content massaging, and we arrived at the vision and guiding principles that are in this draft document. So the vision, many people say it's hard to establish this vision. You could take Casson out and replace it with any other city. Well, the reality is that many cities strive for the things that Casson is striving to have as well. And so the vision talks about things like collaboration, revitalization, responsible growth patterns, adapting to change, and vibrancy, building vibrancy in the community. And so we translate those into a set of guiding principles. Small-town identity is a big one. Prosperous community, the vibrancy. A welcoming community, a community that incorporates change, a community that its doors are open for new business opportunities and new residents. Vibrancy in commercial activities and economics. Healthy, both from an environmental standpoint, but also in active living, parks, trails, and recreation opportunities. Innovative, striving for new opportunities. And then connected, both from a transportation standpoint, but also from a technology standpoint. Those guiding principles become kind of the framework for what we ground our decisions in. So when I talked about, comp plans are not static, they are dynamic. Inevitably, when you approve the document, a couple of weeks later, you're going to have someone come in with a project idea or a concept that's not the same color on the map. Those guiding principles are what you use to begin to evaluate, is it a good project? It may very well be a good project. And so what's that measuring stick? And that's what these are intended to be. So that's an important chapter. It's probably one of the briefest chapters that we have, but it's an important one nonetheless. So going from the vision and guiding principles, then we have the next big element, and this is the one that most people equate to, and that's the land use chapter. And that's the plan where we have, actually the map back here shows really well, where we guided all the parcels within the city and beyond the city where we expect we might grow for a particular land use pattern. That land use plan is how we accommodate the projected growth in the city. And so early in the process, we looked at development projections, we looked at where we're, where we bend from a historical absorption to where we think we might go. And we did projections based on a number of different scenarios and established a range. And said, based on this range of jobs and household and employment opportunities, here's how much land area we need to plan for. And we added more land to that because we want to make sure that we don't run out of land prematurely, which then artificially inflates land prices. And so the land absorption responds directly to the employment, household, and jobs, the jobs, households, and population projection that we provided. So you'll see in the summary, we do have an executive summary up front, too, by the way. The boards that you see up here, which we'll leave here at City Hall, are reflective of that executive summary. So we're looking at planning to 2040 to accommodate about 2,500 people, population growth, about 1,000 new homes, which, if you look at an annual absorption, that's consistent with what we've experienced in the last decade or so, not just recently, because recently we've kind of gone through a slow period, and about 1,000 jobs. And that 1,000 jobs is pretty aggressive, probably more than we would really absorb given our proximity to Rochester. But the idea that you plan for as many jobs as you do new households gives people the ability to work in Casson as well as away from Casson. And so that idea was how we established the employment. So the land use plan is where we introduce then kind of the key text statements in the document. So you have the picture that shows where growth is logically going to go. And that picture, the map that you see up there, responds to community intent as well. And we did go through an exercise where we laid out some maps with it. If we grow, where would you anticipate or where do you think logical patterns of growth are? And so that map enabled community members to come in and play with some chips and say, here's where I think it should go. And so one thing that that land use map did do that's a little bit different is it treats downtown and it extends downtown. It recognizes the core part of downtown, that area north of the railroad tracks along Main Street, and it extends downtown along Manorville Avenue down to 14th as a land use category. The important thing to distinguish there, however, though, is that there are two distinctively different areas. There's the historic core part of downtown, and there's Manorville Avenue, which is a transportation corridor that's going to have a different character and different feel on it. The idea was, from an identity standpoint, try to connect the two so that when you come off 14th, you know there's something more into downtown. And so it may be signage, it may be landscape treatments, it may be individual architectural components on building frontages, it may be site design. What that may become requires more planning. So we're at a 100,000-foot level here. The next thing you do is you get into some detailed master planning. And that then informs the site planning. So right now, what we have in the plan document, we start to introduce terminology. And that terminology is the, is a structure. And I think if you go to page 1-7, you'll see the structure that we have. I think that's a good, the first time we've introduced the structure. But essentially, we have goals. Goal statements are desired end state that we're trying to achieve. Each goal is then supported by a set of policies. And those policies are intended to provide the action-oriented reactionary or proactive response to a development project, a proposal, an idea. The policies then are also supported by, in some cases, not every case, an action step. And the action step, we have a list of them over on the implementation board here. We have about 30 or so action steps. Those action steps are physical things that you would do. For example, once you adopt the comp plan, you start to look at your zoning ordinance and you might amend your zoning ordinance. That's a physical start and end date that's an action step you would do. So it's important to review those goals, policies, and action steps because those are what help you defend actions and decisions that you or the planning commission might make, or as a council might make, or as a staff might direct. It also provides the development community, property owners, a sense of understanding of what's trying to be achieved here. And so there's a removal of some of the ambiguity, but I will tell you that there's always going to be subjectivity in evaluating comp plans because of the level that they're at. And so in the land use chapter, then, at the end of that chapter, you'll see a list of goals, a list of policies, and a list of action steps. One thing that we did do, you'll see a series of icons that are in there. Those icons are intended to say this goal is directly related to this guiding principle. There may be more than one. And so that helps you understand that we're trying to draft something that is directly related to that guiding principle. So we go from the land use chapter then into more programmatic items. Community development blends housing and economic development. And so there are programmatic components, desire to have a diversity of housing options, housing styles, orientation, neighborhood development, and economic development, diversity of tax-based job creation and programming. So the economic side of it, we did get a comment today on a couple of different components there. They talked about recognizing that the city is, what the city's ISO rating is, and I do not, I'm not intimately familiar with ISO rating. I know Joe has a little more familiarity with that than me, but essentially, it's a rating for your city that gives you a lower insurance qualification. And so that's a marketing tool that should be referenced in the economic development section. So that was suggested to me. So we have a number of goals and action items in this community development chapter. We then have a chapter on parks and recreation and active living. If we think about our community and you think about how you grow and you think about the neighborhoods, one of the things that everybody says is a great asset in any community, this one included, is parks and trails and sidewalks. And you've done a lot of planning in that avenue. The piece that we added to this was starting to talk about Greenway corridors and the connectivity, and particularly Marston Creek, and how that spine can be a connecting link between some of the new growth areas, Lyons Park on the south side, and ultimately possible connections as you go north to the regional destination of the State Coach Trail. We add that opportunity as a great asset in the community. We look at how do you protect and preserve components that are already protected and preserved, but link them together, wetlands, floodways. But then there's also buffers around those, there's also flood plains that you could do development in, but things that maybe are more valuable as a green corridor. We don't get specific on how that's implemented, but that's an example of policy direction as development happens in those areas. How do you preserve those open space corridors? How do you build a trail connection through there, through park dedication or other development extractions? How do you work with development community to try to realize that benefit and realize the economic benefit of that kind of action that goes beyond just the lot that fronted, but into the whole neighborhood? We do talk about a couple of different park search areas, one on the northeast, as new growth happens to the northeast. And this would be something that East Diamond Park could partially serve, but as growth jumps over the Mastin Creek corridor and continues in that easterly direction, a new park service, a new park and somewhere in that area's development happens would be something that would be a consideration in the future. And we also have an area shown, and this is figure 6-1 on page 6-9, an area shown on the southeast side of the community where there's existing private park there that serves the park needs today for the private development. But if we see continued growth in the southeast, we would book it a future park that would serve that residential growth there. And we follow up in that chapter with a series of goals and a series of action steps. There's a number of action steps in this section associated with parks and recreational activities. Transportation chapter is the next chapter. A lot of comments that were received were on transportation and roadway corridors specifically, places where they felt roads should be paved, access to the regional network, particularly to the east. Regarding Trump Highway 14 and a future interchange, the position that we're taking in the plan is consistent with the Trump Highway 14 study, that we're advocating for a connection at some point in time. The location of that connection, as the Trump Highway 14 study, doesn't matter so much from an economic development standpoint because it's proximity to the east, but advocacy for something to continue to move down is an important advocacy position. Once it lands, then I think we should relook at the land use planning on the east side of town. The roadway connections, I think most of the things that are in here are things that have been discussed in the past in terms of roadways. We do talk about complete streets. We talk about a parkway concept on the east side of town and through that new growth area that becomes sort of a signature road corridor and an identity builder. And then we end that chapter again with a series of goals and policies. One of the action steps was looking at a transportation improvement district as a way to try to figure out a funding mechanism to help build growth and to maintain them over time. Chapter 8 is public facilities and utilities. These are the systems that support the growth and development. We have established in here a number of places where we identify key best practices that can incorporate and manage stormwater consistent with the vision and guiding principles. We also talk about the infrastructure systems, being sanitary sewer and potable water, making sure those systems are up to speed, and the electric supply, that the idea there is that ultimately our future growth areas would be served by Casson's public utility. And again, at the end of that chapter, then we have a series of goals, policies, and action steps as well. Then the last chapter is implementation. And we have a board over here that kind of shows the implementation. There's a number of different levels of implementation strategies. As you go through the plan document, you see all the action steps. Those are meant to be implementation initiatives. When we talk about the comp plan, it's really a to-do list. I was talking with a few people prior at the open house session about the nature of comprehensive planning changing with how fast new technologies emerge and the way people do things happens. The idea of planning 20 years out is kind of crazy these days. And so what you see in this to-do list are really action steps that are more like a zero to five years out. And it's a matter of prioritizing those action steps, which is really at the council level as they look at their annual work plans each year, which one of these things are important for us to knock off. So we do have a number of implementation strategies in that chapter. The documents that guide the decision-making is that to-do list, it is a marketing plan, too. It shows prospective employers, prospective residents. We have a vision, we have a direction, we've thought about this. We talk about the process for how they change, and it is a dynamic document. And we also talk about this idea of community indicators as a way to measure progress. And so as we think about implementing these, we always want to think about what's the key measure to show that we're moving in the right direction and that it becomes a reasonable and a valuable implementation action step. When you look at revising this or updating this in a couple of years, and they say you should do it in a couple of years, not wait five years or six years, you may look through that and say, there's really nothing that's happened as a result of this, and then therefore maybe that action item is not relevant and we remove it. Or it is relevant, we keep it on there, and maybe we move it up in terms of priority list. Or we have completed this and we check it off. And we use these indicators to measure success with this. So the last section then is to take that implementation matrix. And in there, we talk about who's the responsible entity for carrying it through. So there's some ownership to this, and you'll see planning and zoning is on there on a number of different components. Most importantly is the zoning ordinance and the subdivision controls that you'll need to review. We talk about the priority, we talk about general cost terms, very general. We talk about some funding sources, there could be others, and what indicator we might wrap that to. So all of that in 120-some pages with a very brief and concise executive summary upfront that hopefully helps people browse it and review it quickly. I am here to answer questions, and as mentioned, it's a public hearing. So if you have some brief questions for me now, I could respond to those, or you could go to the public hearing anyway.
Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
And then after the public hearing, I'll talk through some of the comments that I've received and add those, too. So I'll help wrap it up.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Teresa, anything to add from the city's behalf?
I, I do not, I already provided my notes to Brad.
With that said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you've got anything to add or share on this topic, if you'd be kind enough to come to the podium, give one to your name and an address, please. With that said, we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay. If I can just then add, please? Couple of things that came up then, so changes that we would consider. We have a number of action steps on there, implementation initiatives. And I would say there's, in chapter 5, there's a couple that I'd like to add. These were talked about early in the process and kind of just overlooked these. These both came out partially through the engagement process in the public, but also through engagement process with key stakeholders, including a chamber and business community. But one of them was evolving the vision and guiding principles into a new branding or promotional strategy. And so we would add that particular action item as a strategy in chapter 5. And the other one was providing forum, this is a, this is an interesting idea. I don't know exactly where it came from, but, but I do know that it was talked about. But, and we've done this in a couple of other communities. So it's really just creating a group, and anybody can do this, but creating a forum for conversations about innovation and connectedness as an approach to promote entrepreneurship. And so you have people in this community that have tremendous resources. And if we think about job growth and tax base and growing new corporations and new ideas, creating that think tank or that social network where that dialogue can occur, I think it's a great forum to create. It just takes someone with the initiative to say, hey, let's meet every month for coffee and we'll talk about these things. And they throw them out there. I don't know if that's exactly what you were getting at, but...
Yes, yes.
The one place that this did happen, it didn't become an initiative in the comp plan, but we were doing a comp plan for Ironwood, Michigan. And through the process, we had similar initial meetings like we did in Casson, and there was a group of people that said, well, hey, they like to drink beer. And so they started meeting at this bar, and out of it came this group called Going Forward. And from there became a connection to the Chamber of Commerce, and they started looking for funds for startup businesses. And they started working with the downtown that had a lot of vacancies to create spaces that were temporary spaces where you could create a storefront or an office rent. And the property owners were interested because then it had someone using the space, so they were writing their rents down in order to get something generated. So that didn't make it in the comp plan because they were off and running before we were done with the comprehensive plan. So I think it's a good idea. It's one that you could talk about and doesn't require any funding to create, and it's a good community initiative. So those are two initiatives that we would look to add. And that's all.
Thank you. Gentlemen, a number of us have been involved in this project since the beginning of last year, but if anybody has got anything more they would like to add and thoughts to share. Otherwise, I believe we're in a position where we need to make recommendations to
I have been part of the process of putting this together, and I thank Brad and his company for guiding us through this. And I commend the, the community members who got involved and also contributed to this major document. This is a significant step up from the previous comprehensive plan. I think it's, it's well-written. It hits on a number of high points, a number of areas of focus for our community. And I think it's going to help jumpstart things with changes in our zoning ordinances, and it already has had some impact on our planning process over the last few months. So with that, I'm going to force a motion to send this to the city council and hope that they approve it.
Any more discussion? Otherwise, I would be looking for a second. A second. Motion a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Composed. Make the recommendation to approve the comprehensive plan to the city council.
Is that, do you want to see the additions that he talked about?
There's no reason in my mind not to add them.
Somebody would like to argue the point with me?
Okay.
So this will go to council on June 20?
June 13.
June 13. Yep.
And thank you all.
Next item on the agenda, public hearing, Wilker conditional use permit.
Jason Wilker submitted an application for a conditional use permit for a garden and
Is that all we want to share before we open up the public hearing?
Unless you have some specific questions about what was in the packet.
No. With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Same rules as before. If you'd be kind enough to come up and share your thoughts at the podium, please give one to your name and your address.
Commissioners, thank you. I'm Julie Nagorski with the DeWitt Law Firm, here on behalf of Jason Wilker. Jason initially retained me back in January of 2018. What preceded his retaining of me was a series of missteps and misguided by the city, unfortunately. He has a conditional use permit for his property. He specifically bought the property after the conditional use permit was granted back in 2017. Excuse me. The conditional use permit provides that no additional commercial structures will be permitted on the property. It is silent. There is nothing in there about addition to commercial structures, modifications to structures, enlargement of building footprints, nothing to that effect. And under the law, you can't read additional terms into rights that are granted and secured by the conditional use permit. Mr. Wilker wanted to expand his building, and he undertook preliminary steps to that and was told by the city that he had to stop. He went into City Hall and he was told to submit an application, an application for what he did not know. Ultimately, on November 22nd, 2017, he submitted an application for a building permit. At that time, it was not complete, we admit. He required additional submission to make the application. He required additional submission to make the application complete. He received more direction from the city. On December 18th of 2017, suddenly, Mr. Wilker found himself submitting an application for a minor subdivision. In early January, he was informed that you all, the planning commission, would be holding a hearing regarding revisions or modifications to his conditional use permit. By the time he retained me then, he had three apparent applications at the direction of the city, none of which were really what he wanted, except for the building permit. On January 5th, 2018, I wrote a letter. We asked that the planning commission not hold a hearing because he had not submitted an application for a conditional use permit. To date, I still have not seen a reported application preceding January 5th, 2018, for a conditional use permit on Mr. Wilker's property. The planning commission consulted apparently with the city attorney and the matter was withdrawn. There was no hearing. And we thank you for that. Sincerely. On March 7th, 2018, finally, Mr. Wilker heard on a building permit application from November. Under the city code, the building official grants or denies a building permit application. The city code does not grant authority to the city administrator or the planning and zoning official with respect to building permits. Nonetheless, on March 7th, 2018, Mr. Wilker received a denial of his building permit application, not from the building official, but from the city administrator. On April 6th, 2018, then, we appealed that decision. And we again sought guidance from the city. How do you want this appeal to go? We're asking you to take a look at your ordinance and determine what the law requires of you to do here because he's applied for a building permit application and he doesn't have a denial from the right authority. On April 10th, 2018, the city council board of adjustments and appeals decided that it would hear the matter on April 25th. On April 25th, 2018, the city council did indeed hear our official appeal of the building permit application denial. Mr. Wilker called me within the next three days and said, my portion of that meeting was not recorded. Believe it or not, my portion of that very important meeting was not recorded. And I went online and I found that indeed, the city council notes that the video failed during that portion of the meeting. So here it is. He submitted an application in November of 2017. In April of 2018, he's finally receiving an official decision on that. The video fails and we don't know what happened, although he's directed once again by city officials to submit an application of some sort. And now what you see today, what I saw today, was a one-page document saying CUP at city council request. Given all of the facts and circumstances, we would ask that you extend the 60-day rule with respect to Mr. Wilker's most recent CUP application. We don't believe that this is the right course. And if it is the right course, we don't believe that the city, that the city planning commission has before it all of the facts and information it needs. So our request is that you please extend the 60-day rule and table this for further discussion at another meeting. Thank you. And Mr. Wilker is willing to answer questions if you would like to have them answered.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to contribute to the public hearing? Otherwise, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you.
I think both sides need some time to work through this. I think we need to grant it.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to sit in, this was a few years ago, but I was on planning and zoning at the time and it was, Tony Bigelow came in with a conditional use permit because I believe that he had owned the building in some form or fashion. And wasn't there something that got annexed into the city and automatically became zoned R1 as a result?
Yeah, I mean, anything that comes, anything that is basically brought in, is brought in as R1. Especially bare land.
Right.
The minimum, the lowest.
Yep. And I can only speak for myself. I thought the top process was something to the effect of, oh, and continue to operate it as a business as long as it didn't modify what was there. I think A to Z.
Well, I think part of the discussion too was that it was kind of more of the fact that not necessarily was it probably going to stay there forever, but more of an idea of more residential housing coming in that's going to get developed on the property. Well, obviously, as you can see, cop plans change. Plans change.
Yeah. I'm just trying to recall how we ended up here. But with that said, I have, there seems to be a, there seems to be a little bit more involvement in here than what plan of zoning would necessarily be involved in.
I agree. I make a motion to extend, grant the extension.
Sorry?
Would you clarify that it's a 60, I believe you can do a 60-day extension?
Yeah. Sorry. Throat's going to say we need to put the time...
Make a motion to grant the 60-day extension.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Teresa, do we have a committee that, does the city have a committee that would handle these and get the two parties together to discuss it?
The city has an attorney and the city attorney will listen to this, take and respond to the other party's attorney.
Okay. But there's no other committee process?
No.
Next item on our agenda this evening, Casel preliminary plat revisions.
So here we are again. We sent a response letter to everybody's review of all the different things. You know, we propose a 20-foot wide bike path on the south end. Just put that a little bit in. Outlets A to P would be an extension of existing lots, for the homeowners for their own good and their use, you know, basically. Some of the other stuff came into like the floodplain, but there are used, permitted uses of the floodplain, like yards and gardens and play areas and whatnot, you know, so I just, I don't understand why this is becoming such a deal. We hatched on the corridor at Maston Creek, you know, basically the top of slope or where the water runs all the time. It's kind of a protected corridor, no matter what. You don't need easement for it, it's just as protected. Just, that's the way it is, so. I don't really know. Then that Outlet R, we're going to dedicate that to the city so we can fix up some of the things they got going on there and bid connection to that park that's there. That's about one acre. Is there anything you guys are hung up on or...
I guess, can I ask a question? Wasn't it, we were talking about Outlet S being designated as park area for the city to run that bike path?
No. Well, there's possibly an area in there, but then all of a sudden, it was like the discussion came up and then they wanted, the city wanted Mr. Casel to give them a whole bunch of area. So then it's like, okay, if you want a designated bicycle path, the place is going to be is on the south side, you know, on the south end of the property.
Yep.
Because Mr. Casel still has the reach of ownership of the stuff and this, and he wants to use it.
I'm just asking.
Right. Right. So there were, I mean, essentially, the staff recommendation hasn't changed. So, you know, the first option, or the second option, first option was to not allow a minor subdivision of the lot. The second option was that the lot, the outlots that are not connected to adjoining parcels be conveyed to the city for greenway and a future trail. And then, then there's the option that includes the trail as it's proposed from Mr. Casel, except for that trail ending on the railroad track doesn't get us, doesn't get the trail back to the future greenway and up and around Maston Creek to where the county trail comes in to 16. So, and then to have additional drainage that actually, well, that's the purple and blue one. So the drainage area that reflects the floodway. And the trail coming back up into the green space so that it continue on to the east with future development. Because right now, it just ends out on the track somewhere. So, so that would be another option. And then if neither of those two appeal to the planning commission, to make the lots that are not attached to residential lots into a conservation corridor with the future trail to be determined, that's the yellow outline. So those were all in your packet, I think. Along with the staff comments were in there as well.
Well, I know we talked to Carter Blaine and he is not interested in seeing that path come up along where he's going to do his next development either, so along Maston Creek. It does say in here that the city's free to negotiate and offer the landowner money if they want that stuff. For him to donate 60% or 70% of his land to the city just because, I mean, I don't know what, who's dreaming there? You know? I'm sorry, but...
I get it. I get it. I guess the other question I had, and he can answer too. You know, there was some confusion with some of the homeowners here the last time that we all got together. And I suggested maybe giving them more information would help clarify some things.
I have been around and talked to all the homeowners that are associated with this. There's quite a few on here tonight. To my knowledge, nobody has any big complaints. Concern that one person had was if someone bought their backyard and then they sold their house and didn't sell the backyard, now you've got a landlocked piece of land. I can't control that, but there's literally hundreds of thousands of landlocked pieces of land in the state of Minnesota. I mean, if that were to happen, I would, I would think that somebody would be interested in that along the way that borders it. Providing an access to a backyard, I don't see as something that we need to be concerned with on this. I mean, the use of this is gardening, mowing your lawn, planting a tree, that kind of stuff. And personally, you'll have, you'll have two separate warranty deeds. They cannot be conjoined because your home is, your house is on homestead, that real estate. So when the house is sold, you're selling two warranty deeds. It's the way I would personally do it in that situation.
Right. I don't think you'd want to join the properties anyway because of flood insurance.
Yeah. You would make your property unmortgageable, is what you would do. Because if you bring something in that's partially or all in the floodplain...
No, you could do a flood certificate for your revised parcel and show that your structure's outside of the floodplain, so that wouldn't necessarily be a hangup.
I guess a question I had since we're talking about access and maybe you can help me through this scenario. So let's say, for example, one of these outlots, the homeowner doesn't want to buy it for whatever reason. So you still retain ownership of that lot. How do you get back there to maintain it?
I own all the other land on the other side of it.
Okay. Get back through that?
Yeah.
And what if somebody just buys one randomly? It's like if I wanted to go in and buy one from him. How would I access it?
They're, they're all kind of taken care of randomly anyway. And as you walk through back there and you can tell, this person most of here, this person's got a fence back to here, they're all kind of box, don't they?
Right. But right now, if you separate these, sell them individually and say, I buy one, which I don't even, I live a mile away, you own half, you know, the south half, some of those east, west, and north, and I want to get out there to mow it, I can't...
Oh, if someone bought it, that don't have...
I don't really think that's the intention of it.
No, that's not the intention. I guess I, I personally would like to retain ownership of these and give absolute chance to the person that lives in the house. And if the person doesn't want it or whatever's going on, they got other things going on in life and can't, I'll just retain ownership of that. I mean, I've lived there 22 years and pretty much all of the houses around me have turned over three, four times and it's just, it's just the way it is, you know. I don't plan on going anywhere real soon. We have the other acres out back there that have my little lock pass on and stuff and enjoy it back there. So they would just stay connected on to the part that I still own.
Do you have a majority of the adjacent landlords that are interested in purchasing these?
I would say the majority probably are. There's, there's a few that probably aren't financially set right now to be able to step right in and do this, you know, or whatever else is going on in their life. If I was to take a wild guess, I would say, yeah, this year, we could probably close on half of them, in that mind, you know?
And are you interested in working with the city to try to, you know, I've talked with our city engineer quite a bit about this, about getting that, you know, get that trail through there. Are you willing, are you willing to work with the city to try and get this, some sort of resolution on this trail? Because it has been a plan for a long time.
Oh, absolutely. We've, we've talked extensively about this. Carter's land to the east there is all plotted out. You're probably fully aware of that. There's, no matter where we run that bike trail through, you're running into a dead end. So we, we can go back to the beginning and start changing that bike trail around. No matter what, it's staying on the south side of the creek. We're not going on the north side regardless. That conversation is done. But if you, if you go down in the floodplain along Maston Creek, I think you're inviting a lot of problems when floodwaters do come up and you've got a bermite, you have a strip that runs through there and the undermining and having to repair and stuff like that. And the way Carter's got everything plotted, his backyards actually look just like the backyards that we're going to be creating now. Because those houses that are going to be built there are going to have a backyard that comes all the way down into, they look the mirror of what's, what we're finishing out by plotting these little lots and making them a long, deep backyard of those. So there's not room for a bike trail. Even if we did go in the most ideal area of that six and a half acres that would be left there, you're not going to get anywhere with it. And I think the only thing that Carter is probably going to be willing to talk about, negotiate, or even move would be to continue along outside the railroad track. And at that point, get something to get in the direction where, I don't really know where this thing needs to go. I haven't followed it all the way along to know where the final goal of it is, but as far as that half mile where it needs to go from the park to get over into Carter's stuff there, along the railroad tracks, it's really, it's painful of easy getting, easy one.
Just to clarify, there have been several different versions of general development plans in regard to the properties of east, but there has been no approved plat of the properties of east.
Yeah, so if I could just maybe add to that too, to maybe piggyback on Teresa's comment, that's correct. There's been some general development plans of the areas of the east. In addition to that, there's been previous trail plans that shows the trail following the Maston Creek corridor, ultimately to the east and then going to the north side of Maston Creek and then going up to 16th Street or tying into the county trail system. So I don't think there was a totally accurate statement that there's no way that that trail's going to follow the trail corridor. And the comment to speak of, if Carter's not interested in needing that, well then, you as a planning commission will have to consider whether you want to accept that plat or not because you are not following your... or not because you are not following your comprehensive plan. You have that trail shown in your comprehensive plan, it's been shown on trails maps for some time, so it'd be a future discussion you as a council would have to have at that time. Now, the intent of, of the recommendation to preserve this ultimate trail corridor through this segment is for that, that exact reason alone, is that we are planning a trail corridor along, along that Maston Creek corridor. That's why the staff recommendation is such to preserve that, that trail corridor and that we're planning on building anytime soon, so that's a consideration for the planning commission tonight.
Well, I mean, you want, you're trying to hold up the, the whole property of the corridor, that seems a little excessive, though. I mean, it's, you know, throwing your blanket out and covering all up and...
Turning, turning off the, needing the entire south half, if you will.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever your recommendations are, there...
Yeah, so there is, there is two recommendations. One being again, kind of called the south half from like kind of the bank or the, the non-outwadded lots conveyed to the city as greenway. That would ultimately be all parkland. The reason why I think that should be at least a consideration from the council is again, I'll go back to that park recreation active living map that's on the walls, part of the comp plan, which showed that all as greenway and parkland. So, the question maybe for the council is what directions does it want to go and what is the recommendation from the planning commission? Because that could be construed as that should all be parkland and preserved and there's other references in the ordinance that would support that. So, the applicant's discussion on, you know, is that too much? I think it's a fair, fair discussion point. We referenced a minimal amount of parkland. The zoning ordinance, what I read today, it's a minimal amount that could be needed. So, I, I think the, the city, Planning and Zoning Commission could, could ultimately go that direction. The other conversation we did provide or the other recommendation was the conservation corridor or bike trail easement. I think maybe we'd have to work that through if the applicant was willing to provide that twenty-foot strip somewhere along that corridor essentially from the west platter limits, again, to the eastern, eastern platter limits, and it's not currently shown on the application. But it'd be staff recommendation to continue that farther north up the east property line to get back to where the creek is shown, where that future trail is shown continuing down the Maston Creek corridor. That's why we have, again, that recommendation, trying to follow the comp plan. Brad earlier talked about the public comments that were involved in the comp planning process. So, that's the basis of the, ultimately the recommendation.
Thing is, this comp plan isn't, wasn't enforced, at least.
That trail plan was derived from a previous trail plan that's been in place for some time.
But I mean, the whole comp plan isn't approved yet, is what I'm saying. When we applied, we're going by the old comp plan anyways.
Yep, so there's section three with transportation goals, policies, section five, public facilities, parklands that we referenced.
But I mean, don't you guys, don't you think that if you're going to do a corridor like that, don't you think you have some responsibility to, I mean, consult with a landowner or at least think about buying it instead of just saying, well, we're going to just take it away from you?
Yeah.
But you're not, that's what I'm saying, you're not, I don't see that in recommendations that are referenced.
To consult with the comp plan?
I don't see it anywhere as the city's going to compensate them. It's just, you're supposed to deal it to you. I mean...
It's through the parkland dedication, that's pretty clear in the...
Right, and we did an acre that we required.
It, it says minimum, you reference the trail.
Yeah, and why are you doing the maximum? I mean, I don't know. I mean, why should you have to give up sixty percent of it?
So, I believe the applicants, including Carter, were part of the, we had a builders, developer input section on the comprehensive plan, which included some of that mapping for you guys to provide comments or review comments. I don't think any of those comments were received or haven't provided, I mean...
Well, I don't know that it was, was it said that, well, we're going to come up here and we want you to deed this whole property to us? Nobody had...
Again, it depends on how you would, how you would view on how the city ultimately preserves that parkland recreation in their comprehensive plan. Could be subject to somewhat of a, a debate whether or not it's truly parkland or if we have this conservation corridor across the property. Yeah, that's why there's two recommendations, the staff recommendations for the planning is only to be considered.
I get it, but...
The other thing, I mean, the other thing we have is other areas of this where there's wetlands and there's drainage ways, where we have these fences and yard barns in these areas. It's been a, a kind of a nuisance calls from, from property owners along these sort of areas. My backyard's wet. Well, we're kind of setting ourselves up for some of those, so that was a little bit of the balance here, allowing this outlasted fence backyards and know that we're probably going to get more of these phone calls because we were getting this, this trail corridor or conservation corridor or parkland, the south half is kind of a give and take here. That's what we, we ultimately sat down and talked, so... Again, you, you couldn't look at this as a, going back to your ordinance that would reject this because land shall not be subdivided, that is not a buildable lot, none of these lots are really buildable, potentially on the way west half could be. But I, I don't think that's the direction the, the planning commission is going, but that was kind of what we, trying to work out a little bit of a happy medium on working through the properties, allowing to extend their backyards. Not ideal from a standpoint, we have a sewer line through there, but ultimately getting something in the form of the trail easement to conserve that trail corridor on Maston
Outlots S and Q were never intended to be anything to do with the city when I bought this land. I knew nothing about your plan of ever having a bike trail out there. I only knew of a plan to have a bike trail up against our backyard right across the south edge of our borders. That's where a bike trail was initially said to be planned. Now, S and Q is to me like a giant garden that I really enjoy. I, I don't really like the idea of having a bike trail out there anyway. If this is something where you guys want to buy S and Q and have nearly seven acres that you can do anything you want to do out there, we can talk about that in a future date. I'm not asking to do anything with S and Q. It's the city that wants a trail in there. Now, we, we are giving you an acre and we're giving you easements through these other lots for your storm drains that run through there that really need some work done on them anyway. And these neighbors have, a lot of them have been there for a long time and they do manicure that, they do enjoy their backyards and they like a place to have a campfire where they've only got otherwise thirty-five feet off the back door of their house. I, I don't think that we need to get into this other six and a half acres and, and just totally arm wrestle over something that may or may not ever happen anyway. Now, to have yourself a really nice park out there, yeah, to have the whole thing and to do it exactly however you want to do it and to talk Carter into how he wants to do it someday to, to connect on, it doesn't matter what we decide that we want to do here. It still has to go somewhere. And him and I talked quite extensively and Rich and Carter talked additionally on that. And I don't think you're going to get this whole thing redesigned over on the east side to bring a bike trail through the middle of that nearly seven acres and come into that and change what he deems as his perfect layout there. I, I get that, that it's not in a final plat yet. I think it's...
Well, in the, in the application, that'd be before the planning and zoning commission at that time, that that area of the east is developed, would be not be in performance of the comprehensive plan and that'd be the consideration of the planning commissioner reject exists on it again, in performance of the comprehensive plan. I don't know what a future planning commission may or may not prove, but that would be the discussion of the staff recommendation at that time.
Right. So, as far as outlot S and outlot Q, I'm, I'm not asking to make any changes there. I'm, I'm trying to give you a little something. I'm just not asking for anything there. I'm not doing anything. We own the land. What, why do we even got to do anything? If, if you get yourself a good plan over on the east side and you show me where the entrance is going to be, I'll work with you.
It's up there on the map, partner recreation.
Well, that's not, that's not through Carter anything. I mean, that, that's, that's a goal right there. I get that. I, I want to work with you. But I, I'm not going to give you six and a half more acres just to get everybody's backyard extended. I mean, before I do that, I'm just going to go down the line and say, move your building, move your town. I got eleven acres right here, this is this. And at that point, I don't see this thing coming through ever. I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to work with you here. There's only so much that a person can do on some little thing like this, I mean...
Brandon, chances are, if we have a bike trail, it's probably going to be right up alongside the railroad right away. Chances are.
So, so the applicant did provide a twenty-foot easement along the railroad, selects us to, for discussion purposes, that are open to a trail at some point being constructed, assumed to be at city cost that we'd build a trail through, corridor through there. My only comment to that would be, you know, two things. One, again, the staff recommendation, we need to continue that to the north to get towards, closer to the creeks and we have future development. We're following our comp plan to continue that trail. Secondly, I, I did provide a environmental corridor, which is more of a vague document saying along the corridor across, this is called outlot S, the city has the right to build a trail. We'll kind of work the lay of the land to get that trail through if it was across outlot S, because there may be wetlands in there, so I don't, I don't know if we want to shoehorn ourselves into that twenty-foot corridor right off the road right away. There may be some restrictions when we ultimately come to build that, it'd be my only concern moving forward.
The walnut trees that I'm planting in outlot S, I would ask that we're not near another bike trail through that.
So, I mean, that's something we could put in a...
I mean, that's, that's right where you're talking about. It's...
The idea would be to, that's the reason why the environmental corridor I provided is an example document for some other subjects we've worked on through Cascade Township on the north side of Rochester to kind of follow the river, Lake Zumbrow, so the township at some point can have a trail corridor all along Lake Zumb, I'm sorry, Zumba River, basically from the city of Rochester to the north towards the Zumbrow, or Lake Zumbrow, excuse me. So, they've been preserving these corridors as developments have been happening, so that's kind of the basis and the reason why we went with that document to be a little more useful in trying to just shoehorn ourselves into twenty-foot easement. So, may upgrading that may have to get out of the twenty-foot easement to get in void wetlands or other trees or other, other items.
I, I think knowing that property, I've been back there, I think you're going to have grading issues in that where you put the bike path, just the way it is. And I would think you'd want it a little more away from the creek, the way it floods.
Yep.
I think, just the way I see it, just myself, not talking for everybody else here, but if, if Mr. Casel would be willing to allow us to have a twenty-foot right away right along the railroad property for a future bike path, once we get to, um, once we get to that far east side, at least from there, if Carter agrees to have a park or something, we can turn from there and go through the park for the bike path heading back to the creek, at least from what I know of that property, the bike path would be best suited near, close, as close to that railroad as possible. That's the way I see it. And once we get to the east side of that and we work with Carter when he goes to develop the rest of that, I, I've always said that old gravel pit would be an ideal place for a park. And then at that point, then the trail can turn.
But ultimately, to draw any meaningful conclusions, you need more information than what you've got available today.
Pretty much.
Yeah. And I don't disagree with your sentiment about having a bike path close to the railroad tracks.
What additional information would you need to be able to pass this limit on plat today?
Mean nothing.
Would, would you have an issue with doing what I just asked for?
No. The twenty-foot easement is going to be an offer.
Yeah.
It's on, it's on the map.
Right.
Can I, I...
That's, that is our offer.
Um, come to a point of order. Did we open a public hearing?
No, there is, forgive me, there's not one noted on that.
Okay, okay. Oh, that's right, we had our public hearing.
We did.
Thank you. Thank you for helping with that. I appreciate it. Okay.
We've always been somewhat casual in our approach to toward planning.
I, I know. And I was, and thank you for that. I appreciate it.
See your inputs?
Yeah. I, I don't have any problem with it. I acknowledge what Brandon is saying with the, the comprehensive plan and the need for the, the bike trail to eventually work its way north. I don't know if we could, in adopting that, get first right of refusal on the potential twenty-foot easement moving north along this property line. I don't think we're in a position now to make a decision on that, not knowing what's going to happen further east on Carter's property. He may have a general development plan, but that may change six times before we see it officially here. So, not knowing what's going to happen there, I don't know that I'm prepared at this point to figure out where that, or force where that trail goes north. There may be a better option further east to get closer to the creek. So, I'm okay with a twenty-foot easement. Now, whether it's aligning the railroad or along the creek, I would like to maybe have some further discussion on it, but it sounds like Mr. Casel may be willing to discuss the alignment with that. Correct me if I'm wrong, or is it, are you stuck on the along the railroad corridor? That being the only spot for a different trail?
Well, if, if a bike trail goes through anywhere else through S and Q...
Right.
It really cuts my playground in half.
Okay.
Because I live on the, the north side of the creek.
So, what you're saying, you're hard and fast on it being on along the railroad?
It really needs to be there.
Okay.
I mean, unless the city just wants to, to buy out the whole thing and have their say and do what they want to do and...
It's relatively short. You know, I don't have any problem with it as it is. I didn't have any problem with it a month ago. So, it's his land. We've got the dedication and if the city wants to pursue an agreement or purchase land moving further north along this property line in the future, maybe we can get first right of refusal on that.
Joel?
Well, I would, I would agree. My only, I'm okay with it, I guess, running against the, I, I would prefer to see it follow the river just because I can, I can see how that would be more aesthetically pleasing to someone running along a bike trail, but I also understand the cut in your property in half too, so, you know, if at the end of the day, we need to just work with the, the easement that we have along the railroad tracks and like you said, we have no idea what Carter's property to the east will, will bring in a, in a development plan. You know, my, my only concern would be is, you know, w- once we get into that, you know, do we, do we really have what we need running with that easement against the, against the railroad tracks, so...
We have the starting point.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's, it's not necessarily ideal, but we're also, you know, just offering up outlot R, which I think is, is good as well, and I think that'll, that'll be a, a nice addition to that area, albeit we're still going to have to cross the creek there with the, with the bridge or something, so at some point. But, yeah, I guess I, I really don't have any, any huge issues with it. I would agree with Dwayne with the fact that it would be nice to, you know, for someday that you do decide to sell it, that we did have a first rate to, as, you know, as the city to acquire that property.
I would grant that, first right of refusal. You're talking on outlot F's and Q?
I would say...
On the east boundary.
I would say both, both S and Q if someday you decided to, to sell that, that the city had the first rate. Trails can be changed and adjusted down the road.
Brandon, do you see anything, and I don't, it doesn't matter to me if it goes along the railroad track, but that's the best answer for this scenario. Like everybody said, things can change, but down along that part of the railroad track, you had mentioned earlier that maybe, that may be an issue or anything along there? Is something that can be remedied? Is it more fill or...
Like you said, yeah, we just don't know. That's why I'm, I'm cautious not shoehorning this into a twenty-foot easement and then if we have run degrade issues and we can't really work within a twenty-foot easement, it could be a potential issue, hence the environmental corridor to me is...
You can always get a temporary construction easement while you're doing the construction.
Sure. And we, we have really preserved the corridor because we're not allowed a temporary construction easement by the property owner at the time. So, that's why the environmental corridor to me is more attractive, I guess, to kind of get that in there. Or maybe the... Or maybe the 20-foot turns into 25-foot just for grading purposes, kind of work the trail in there at that time. Dwayne, you mentioned a first right of refusal. I'm not... I don't know if I fall out for the easement. I don't know. I've never heard of an easement associated with a first right of refusal. To me, it would be either the easement would be platted on the along-the-east property or it would not be. And then maybe what my recommendation of the PMZ would be, if that easement's granted, that doesn't necessarily set Carter up as he develops to the east. That would just allow us access or the easement ultimately for the trail. If it's built along the river, then we have the existing corridor preserved along the east property on it. Or if we stay up along the railroad tracks, we just don't end up building that segment of trail down to the river. So it gives us a little more options on how we want to stay up towards the trail or kind of bring it... I'm sorry. Stay up towards the railroad tracks or go down to the creek area so it provides a little more options in the future.
My only goal on the 20-foot easement for the bike trail is to get you through the property. I mean, as far as getting down to the east end of my property, taking a left and going north a quarter of a mile and getting down to the creek at that point, I wouldn't be in favor of. And actually, the drawing you've got here, Carter retained that because that's part of his new development, all of his lots back right up. That's the borderline. I don't know if that's any information you guys have, but I look extensively at it.
At this point, it doesn't matter. Anything that is dealing with Carter has no bearing on this decision.
Right. If you look at my east border, it's got that little octagon right in the middle there. That's why that's like that. He retained that little strip. So for us to take a bike trail and turn back north with that and stay on my east border, it wouldn't work out real well for what's happening there. I would just assume we'll keep it over on the south side at this point. We're probably in the 20-year time before this ever happens anyway. And at that point, you may own this land, I may not be on the land anymore, and maybe I'll be under the land.
I'm curious, you mentioned Carter retained that piece, or was there a... How was that conveyed separately?
I didn't buy that.
The parcel not currently described as that east line? That's what it appears in the preliminary plat?
That's a quarter section line. Carter took a little octagon out of that.
So we split that?
We split it?
So how does Carter retain that if it was part of the...
Well, the deed, the way the deed was made up, they accepted out the portion that was shown on the general development plan.
So you're going to do a meat and bone splits before you plat?
There's no meat and bone split. It's already... It's been deeded over and whatever. It got recorded last fall. Remember, when did you buy it, huh? Last fall. Yeah. I didn't know anything about it, so... And there again, I mean, we're talking about a detail that's on Outlot F's and Outlot Q. Not necessarily the purpose of this meeting. It contains part of it, I guess, but... How about if we just plat the Outlots up on top there, do the Outlot R for the city, and leave the rest of it go for right now? Forget S and Q. Just let it stay as an Outlot. Just do a final plat on the portion that's going to go to the people's backyards? Is preliminary plat?
Yeah, I guess I still... I guess I just have a hard time kind of getting over for access, that sort of thing. So maybe I could get some help here.
Access for what?
Well, the way the lots are broken up, I could see there could be a potential where, you know, there could be someone, you know, by like Outlot H or something, who's someone else who's not the homeowner in front, and then Q and S gets later by the city, and now you've got this lot in the middle that's surrounded all by different owners. So how do you get there to maintain it?
Well, I would think that if you were going to... Personally, if I was going to buy something that was behind somebody else's property, I would make sure I had access as part of the purchase somehow. You know, and you can always force access if you really want to get to it. I mean...
That could be a potential problem if there's a third party owning that property, forcing access and having to allow access to a third party if they own it themselves.
But I mean, I think you have a... As a purchaser of land, you have a responsibility to know whether you can get to the bank or not, you know? You can't just... Because if some realtor tells you, oh, you can get there, no problem. You better make sure that you do have access. I mean, you know...
Well, too, if you're borrowing against it, there's going to be a deed search on it. No bank's going to finance a landlocked piece of land.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's rules out there to protect people from themselves sometimes. I mean, that's part of it.
And would we need like an access easement or something like on Q to get...
Well, they just try to obtain an access easement from one of the property owners if they just want to walk away. If somebody owns one of these lots and they're going to... Say they... Somebody buys a lot and they own a house there, because that's the only way I'm probably going to sell it to them anyway.
Sure.
And they decide they're selling their house and not going to sell that lot. Well, I would think that they would figure something out, either through me, if they come to me and say, look, can I have an access easement because otherwise I can't do this? Or they're going to talk to the person that they're selling their house to. Can I walk across your yard and go back and have a campfire once in a while on a weekend in my little lot back here? I would think they would cross that road. I mean, it isn't like we need to get a fire truck back there or something like that. It's a backyard. We're talking about behind somebody's house.
I mean, but if you do have campfires back there, potentially you could need a fire truck.
You've got hoses and grass players.
Joe? Any additional thoughts to share, Jonathan?
I've got a quick question here. How are those Outlots being zoned, like specifically Q and S?
I don't know. They are currently...
They are residential, aren't they? It's residential.
They are currently zoned.
Okay.
And there are deed restrictions that the attorney provided. That's right. I think you all have those.
Regarding the deed restrictions, if this gets approved tonight as that final on deed restrictions, then because there's something that's very unappetizing to me as a potential buyer, is that...
Sure. The good news is, is he was here, you've got city council members here, the mayor was here. Ultimately, we're just a recommending body to the city council, so I would strongly advise you take your thoughts to and elect your official. With that said, guys, I guess I'm looking for...
Well, we did have questions. I mean, we... I wasn't at the last meeting, so that was a public hearing?
Yep.
It deteriorated pretty quickly away from the topic at hand. I think there were a lot of property owners who were not aware of what was going on back here, and they were trying to use the public hearing to gain some clarity on this project like more so than it does the topic at hand.
Right. So do... Do we have... I mean, what happened to public hearing? I did read through the minutes, I got to go back and...
You had a lot of confused homeowners that owned the businesses or, pardon, the homes on 30th Street Northeast, asking what was going on behind my building. Some indicated they weren't aware that that was a separate piece of land, some were in the impression that the city owned that land. So there were a lot more questions from Mr. Casel than there really were from the planning and zoning board about his intentions.
So did we finish the public hearing? Did we get tabled?
No, we finished it.
We finished it.
Now we've got follow-up stuff. That's not in the public hearing now. So I'm just kidding. If these were in the public, didn't have knowledge of this, I don't think that's appropriate that we bring these to light now.
Actually, deed restrictions were in the staff recommendation. It was the attorney recommended that. It was in the staff recommendation that was provided for the public hearing, so it was part of that discussion. The attorney did, I think we gave the property owner an opportunity to prepare the deed restrictions, and they did respond with deed restrictions that the city attorney reviewed. And then these deed restrictions are in response to their response to the request for deed restrictions. So that did come up at the public hearing.
And you're okay with this deed restriction?
No. She added Q and S on there, which I'm not sure why, what the... That the whole thing was there. And for... To say for Outlot A and P, no building structure. There's a couple that would be outside of the 100-year floodplain, so they could construct a small shed or something. Okay? And I don't know, there's not many of them, but there's a couple. Probably like B and C, some of those areas. You know, we said no permanent foundations. She's got no building structure, fence, blah, 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 blah. So, you know, we were kind of limiting, like it would be, you know, something on skids or whatever, you know, storage sheds if it was up out of there. The deed restrictions that were discussed talked about things that shouldn't be done in the floodplain to begin with. So we were just putting them in writing. That's really what it was. Because right now, there's a few fences that go out into the floodplain, and that was the discussion. Well, how are we going to prevent fences from getting put in here and continuing to be put in the floodplain and storage sheds? And somebody made a comment that they thought there was a vehicle or something stored out there one time and it flooded. And, okay, so we just wrote out some deed restrictions that really are targeted at stuff that is in the floodplain that should be... Those laws are already in place because you can't just go ahead and fence out a floodplain. You can't go ahead and put temporary buildings or store cars in floodplains and stuff like that. But we're attaching this page to a warranty deed, so it goes with it. If we're going to over-restrict everything that's there and put a bunch of restrictions on the land that I initially bought to is why I bought this, that's where this S and Q and... And some of the permitted uses in the floodway, you know, there's residential law, gardens, plating areas, play areas. They're permitted uses. So when she puts in here, no form of development shall be allowed. I mean, if you wanted to put it, make a little playground or something, or put a garden in, would that be construed as being altering it there?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So, I mean, I think that... If we put a deed restriction on S, you probably wouldn't be able to put a bike path in there.
Well, yeah, I mean, on most of this floodplain stuff in this vast creek, you don't do anything without talking to DNR anyways. And the city got spanked for clearing it down here because they didn't know enough to talk to DNR.
The laws are real clear on how you deal with floodways and creeks and streams and all that. I mean, we don't need to try to reiterate and put it all in writing again.
I think in Teresa's defense, I think what we were looking at was up along Blains where we had the issue. People building fences and buildings and obvious drainage areas and blocking the water so their neighbor next to them is getting flooded out. And I think that's what this was all about. So we don't have that kind of issue. Because they were blaming the city for, you know, allowing Carter to have this wall of dirt behind him, but the whole issue was with them putting the wrong thing on their property in the wrong spot, you know? And it just created an issue. Some people don't think about that. They just think this is our property. We can build, we can do anything we want to because it's our property.
And I'm just going to throw it back a little bit. Sometimes, doesn't the city have a responsibility to police some of this a little bit? I don't mean watch it all the time, but, you know, the city maintenance guys are working all over town all the time. I mean, if they see something, maybe that... And this is above and beyond what their call of duty is, I realize that, but they can say something to the, you know, superintendent or whoever, and say, these people are doing this stuff, I know, it's way back there, we're looking at the sewer line, you know, whatever. I mean, the city could help just enforce that or police it a little bit too. I mean, it's extra, but I mean, it's...
To a point.
Yeah.
I mean, there are spots where they just...
But I mean, you can't protect people from themselves all the time anyway. No matter what you do, somebody's going to do it.
I get it. I get it. But I think she was just trying to rein in some of this.
Well, and we came up with, I mean, I thought what we came up with is pretty decent stuff.
What did you come up with?
It was in the packet. In David Flatter's, that's in the package, correct?
Yeah, it's the last paper of the year, I believe. Page 13.
Yep. We talked a little bit about that. So, yeah. These five things that we came up with and submitted are all the things that we discussed and I think we elaborated them pretty conclusively to where it's pretty clear about what you can do in floodplain. And statement number one there does say, no permanent foundations or structures shall be constructed, A through P. That's in our head. S and Q is the land that we're retaining, don't have a plan. I mean, it's walk trails, we could take an ATV out there and plant some trees or... It's kind of like a giant park the way it is. There's no plan to build anything. I mean, it's... I don't think we need to get too detailed on what's going on out there. The city's dealing with one person. The city's not dealing with 20 people there.
On those Outlet Q and S, you mentioned riding ATVs and it's your private property deemed resident, and you're saying that it's zoned residential. My question is about, just asking about firing the firearm back there. Some deer go back there, you know, and they walk through there and, I don't know, you know, I don't know. I don't know zoning and stuff like that, but it's...
Well, that's not a zoning question, to be honest with you. No.
It's not a zoning question, but you can't shoot a firearm within 500 feet of any building anywhere.
Right. So it's like, I don't know anything about that, so that's a concern if somebody owns that property.
Yep. You have to be a thousand feet outside of city limits. So in other words, to shoot a firearm, you have to go all the way to the east side of Carter's field out in the David Agnes to be able to shoot a firearm.
Or Ridge's place.
Yeah. The only gunshots we ever hear at our place are the ones that come from across the railroad track and they echo across there.
Can we request that you open us back up to a public hearing? This has not gone through due process like Quay was pointing to.
What due process do you feel that we've missed out, ma'am?
According to statute 152 and how the subdivision hearing is supposed to be held, there's been more information offered from the last public hearing.
I don't think there's any information offered that wasn't discussed at that point.
The deed restrictions were not laid out. The plots didn't read on. There's several ordinances that haven't been addressed.
That's why they tabled it and we came back this time because some three things were talked about.
But the idea is that she's asking that it's not opened up to a public hearing. It's just banter right now and...
Right. So I did discuss this with the city attorney in regards to the modified plat. And that is specifically a common fine. Flat investigation, preliminary plat. Following review of the preliminary plat and supplementary materials submitted in conformity with this chapter, and following negotiations with the subdivider on changes deemed advisable and the kind and extent of the improvements to be made, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall recommend approval or disapproval of the preliminary plat as submitted or modified. And if the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, it shall express its recommendations for approval and state the conditions of its recommendations for... and state the conditions of its recommendation for approval. So that, so you can approve or disapprove of the preliminary replat as submitted or modified. And that's why our notes refer, our staff notes were changed to refer to the modified plat.
Well, I'm, and I'm a big fan of the public hearing, we did have more, we were pretty casual about planning and zoning dealings and hoped to spur a healthy debate on these topics. But we didn't talk about topics at hand last time that we had a public hearing. It was a lot of homeowners coming in here with questions for Mr. Casel, not questions for the city.
That's true.
I mean, I, I would just, I have no problem with it in spirit as long as it is focused and we keep it to the topic at hand. And I realize I am largely the person responsible for keeping it focused.
Can the public ask the direct questions concerning the city ordinance that have nothing to do with Casel and his property and what he wants to do with it other than how it refers to our city ordinance?
You can contact me tomorrow? I'd be happy to answer that.
Ultimately, you two gentlemen, you have enough decisions at city council level to make a decision on this. The joints of being there are likely to fix it.
Can I ask the rest of you, do you have any issues with the Casel presented deed restrictions?
Yes.
No, I'm asking. Sorry. Sorry.
I don't.
Joe?
I don't. My only question would be, you know, the. Are we, what do we consider a, a permanent structure?
Foundation.
Foundation.
Foundation. Permanent foundation. So it's on, it's still on. And that was the intention of it.
That's what I assumed.
Be basically attached to the earth, which would mean.
It'll rot away.
Well, I mean, you could put the shed in and do a trailer horse and anchor it. I mean, you're, be attached, would these consider a foundation?
The intent on that statement is, you know, now we've got a bigger backyard, let, let's throw a, you know, a garage back here. And let's put a concrete driveway around the outside of the house and foundation back here. Yeah, I got thirty feet before the floodplain starts, why can't I do that? So that, that's why that statement has nothing to do with the floodplain. That has to do with the lot that we're, we're outlining here. We're just not building anything permanent on it.
Right, the basis of you selling these lots to people and their intent, that they just get a bigger backyard.
Yes. Nothing else. Yep. There's nothing big built.
The basis of what you're trying to.
If somebody wants to put an accessory building on there, as long as it conforms to the city and stays out of the floodplain, I mean, that's, that's a little bit to deal. I mean, you can hook on that with a skid door or something, pull it up. That's why in statement number two, or, yeah, number two.
Do we need to be concerned or put, you know, and I don't know if the, if the deed restrictions are where we put that, you know, but do we, do we tie these two current lot? You know, the every, you know, every, every outlot to what would be their backyard? And, and say that their, the restriction is to sell to that, to that property owner? Or Mr. Casel keeps, keeps possession of, of those? I mean, he's already said that that was kind of his plan, you know, but if you, if you, if you do that, then you, you don't have to worry about having issues with, you know.
The city, city could force him to do, no, you can't force him to sell their property to someone else, you know.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that that's the one that he offers it to. So somebody, you know, three blocks away, like your example, you know, I'm going to go buy, you know, two of those lots just because I can and.
That would just come back, come to the lease in yourself. If you want to buy one, I wouldn't say you can't buy one if, you know, or whatever, but if you're going to get access to it, that would be, you know, a reward.
Yeah.
Jackie, can I ask you what problem, what you had with Casel's restrictions?
That, or city ordinance one fifty-three dot zero seven zero, the committee was asked to review that. It explicitly states that no land should be subdivided, which is unsuitable for the reason of flooding, inadequate drainage, water supply or drainage facilities. And it goes on to say what, this is a city statute there, you know, and I'd like to know how the city feels about that and why it doesn't apply here.
Can you then, number one more time?
One, one five three dot zero seven zero. And I also think even at a state level, you've got to be careful with this flood property and how the city decides to subdivide it.
This is not a subdivision.
What is it? You're dividing land.
This is plat, this is plat, this is part of an original stamp.
Your definition of a subdivision is any person plotting, replotting or dividing property for the purpose of transfer of title. Doesn't say anything about use for residential or building. You plot land as well.
Water drainage, water supply, sewage treatment facilities, and this is just backyard stuff. It's on the floodplain.
It's just the floodplain, keep that Ron, I told you, I'm just trying to figure out how the city feels about this.
Did you look at any of the permitted uses in the floodplain?
Yes, there's permission for it, you're right. It, you can have it as a lawn, garden, park area, play area, you just can't subdivide it without having some sort of buildable surface on that, item B. All lots within floodplain shall contain a buildable site at or above regulatory flood. There's a ton of these subdivisions that are all in floodplain. I don't know how the city can approve that.
The, so the two references that you're referring to are included in the modified staff planning review.
So you've changed the ordinance than the one that's posted?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
We did, staff did refer to those.
Correct, that's why I'm asking.
In the staff, yeah, in the staff planning review.
Yes, yes. I understand that's where I got the reference.
Okay.
If the staff would like the committee to review it.
Ma'am, these lots are not intended to be sold as buildable lots, they're just full.
I, I'm not questioning that at all.
Okay.
I'm questioning the city ordinance that says you can't subdivide a piece of property like this.
Well, I think you can.
Not according to the hash.
It just says that they should have a building site at or above.
Right.
But when they're.
Is there a building site on these outlots that are fully in floodplain?
That's what the deed restriction, item number one is.
I think that's where the deed restriction kind of takes over for the zoning law. It's intended to be backyards, if you will, it's always intended to be.
I know, but in twenty years, is the intent the same? Yes, if you're still there in twenty years. I'm looking at the city ordinance, I'm not questioning your intent, I'm asking the city a question.
Does the city attorney address that point or consider that point?
Um, she did not address that, that actually was in the staff.
City engineer.
Uh, comments, yes.
Jackie, so your interpretation of that first letter A is, how do you interpret that?
This is written in the, in the flooding section of our city ordinance.
Yep, I've got it up right here.
Right.
Do you have that, one fifty-three dot oh seven?
So, so the floodplain management, chapter one fifty-three of the city of Casson talks about subdivisions. And our, our definition of a subdivision as a city is anytime you separate property for sale or title. And in section one five three dot zero seven zero, it says that no land should be subdivided, that's unsuitable for the reason of flooding. I'll just stop there, even if that applies or not. But item B says all lots within that flood zone should contain a building site at or above the protection elevation. What I'm saying is these, these plots, I don't even know what the state of Minnesota says, but a lot of these land plots that are being asked of the city to subdivide do not comply with our ordinances. And I don't even know if it's legal to sell these plots of land that are in floodplain with no access by the state of Minnesota. I can't answer that question, the city attorney should address it though.
Brandon, did you have something?
Well, that wasn't a review because I think it, you know, could be something the council considered, ultimately, you know, rejecting it on that basis. One of the technicalities, which may be a good city engineer, city attorney question, it says lots. And I haven't looked at the ordinance, it could be, these sort of platted as outlots, they're not intended to be buildable lots. So when, in the planning world and ordinance world, outlots sometimes are considered different than lots. So typically in a subdivision, we have lots and anything that was buildable, that was truly intended to be a buildable lot. We have outlots for other miscellaneous kind of lots that were not ever intended to be served. Exactly, potential ponds and the park lands and trails through them. Other outlots, again, that are not intended to be served as a typical lot as defined as something that you may buy to build a house on or a structure.
Right, that's what this.
So that, that's where I, I think it's a little bit different, but at the same time, uh.
It was noted that some lots didn't part our definition, that would be nice to have in our ordinances also. But I think I understand the intent, I just would ask my question.
But it still poses the question, the reason why that's in there is for this reason. Because in, we're, we're going down a road of, of creating some negative items within and allowing this to happen. And some of the pitfalls that are having backyards that are in drainage ways that are in wetlands. But again, the give and take was to maintain this trail corridor. As we throw our hands up and say, no, we're not going to plat it, developer walks away and now we don't have a trail corridor. So in the spirit of somewhat negotiation, park lands, allowing this to kind of happen, that was what staff was ultimately making the recommendation work with the developers to provide you for consideration.
In the minor subdivision ordinance one fifty-two point zero five four, item G one. It's the only mention of outlots in the entire code ordinance. There's no subdivision land shall result in the creation of a substandard non-buildable lot according to current zoning classification with the exception of existing outlots.
So I think that would still support my comment that these are outlots or not lots as defined by your subdivision ordinance.
Well, I think in kind of reading this, and it depends on how you kind of parse this, but one fifty-three oh seven, part A, no land shall be subdivided, which is unsuitable for the reason of flooding, inadequate drainage, water supply or sewage treatment facilities. And then when you go back to the beginning of that chapter, one, chapter one fifty-three, one fifty-three point zero zero four is the statement of purpose for the chapter. And it's the purpose of this chapter to promote the public health, safety and general welfare and to minimize those losses described in one fifty-three point zero zero two subdivisions contained herein. So then that directs you over to one fifty-three point zero zero two, which is findings of fact. And it says the flood hazard areas of the city are subject to periodic inundation which results in potential loss of life, loss of property, health and safety hazards, disruption of commerce and governmental services, extraordinary public expenditures for flood protection and relief, impairment at the tax base, all which impairs the effect of public health, safety and general welfare. So I think, and like I say, it depends on kind of how you parse part A of one fifty-three oh seven. But the word that is there is unsuitable. If it's not suitable for the reason of flooding, inadequate drainage, water supply or sewage treatment facilities, so.
Well, yet it, it falls into the classification of permitted uses and it would be just fine for the permitted uses. And I don't know about you, but of all the places I go where there's water, everybody wants to be along the water, attracted to it, next to it, whatever, you know. I mean, it's, if you're going to start limiting the access to water because of its water, this whole town would look way different. They wouldn't be here probably.
Hold on, I got a question for Colin. How did you, you read that as that A fits this or it does not fit this?
I think it's open to interpretation because it's the word unsuitable, so how you determine unsuitable?
Well, I'm reading it just because I was, you know, asked, I was kind of like asking Jackie, it says no land shall be subdivided, which is unsuitable for the reason of flooding. I mean, I look at it, it's, most people probably look at it as building up a property on here and saying it's unsuitable because of the reason of flooding. I think that this is just the opposite. It's, you're doing it because, I mean, you know it's going to flood, if you're not putting anything on it, it's not being subdivided for the reason of, there's no reason for the flood, you don't care for floods.
Because it's an outlot.
Because it's an outlot. I don't, you know, that's why I asked Jackie what she had thought, so. Because no land shall be subdivided, which is unsuitable for the reason of flooding, it's not unsuitable for the reason of flooding. So I don't, I, I don't see that that really pertains, but.
And because it's an outlot, then item E doesn't apply, is that your interpretation? That's what I'm asking.
I kind of read it and I rewrote the first sentence of that. The word says, it basically, if I rewrote it, it says the building site, comma, if there is one, comma, shall be at or above the regulatory floodplain protection elevation. That's the way I read that.
And that's the clarification I'm looking for. Because if the city doesn't view these as lots, then maybe it should be looked at a little differently. But, I appreciate your time to answer the question.
You're listing these as outlots?
Yes.
Okay, so ultimately, even if we approve this with your deed restrictions as listed and with the knowledge of you adding the fact that we do have first option of buying the two properties.
I think you got to get that recorded.
Okay.
If you want first letter refusal, you just have to record that. That's only way to protect.
Well, he has to record that.
Yeah, there, there would be a formality.
I'd love that first letter refusal on yours.
There would be a formality. I'd come talk to you tomorrow, see you tomorrow.
Yeah, he'd have to do it because same thing in my property over here with Big Little Vessler, they record first letter refusal before me.
Well, they did it, okay.
Yep.
Okay. I thought it was over there.
So if, if there's a recommendation moving forward of one deed restriction in first letter refusal, may our recommendation be is at the time, if we get the final plating, when the final plat is recorded, those documents are recorded immediately behind the recording of the plat, then the applicant and the city staff would have to work through that recording process.
Okay, getting back to where I was, if this is recorded and if you include that it's twenty foot right away and it goes before the attorney, just to double check on what she has brought up and everything is good to that point, then ultimately, city council has to have the final approval, even if we approve it here.
Right.
Yeah, all that can be done before the final plat.
Right. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I'd just like clarification on the ordinance, I mean, how access to flood thing works.
Is everybody's good?
You know, you're bringing, so deed restrictions, I mean, I'm perfectly fine with what they.
What proposed?
What they have proposed.
I guess I am too. It, it gets to where we want to get to.
Right.
I just want to look at it one more time.
Let's do it.
The, the, item number two and what the attorney has proposed, deposits if there are obstructions. I mean, potentially, they could be bringing in Phil to reroute.
Can't.
I know, but is that part of the, what you have recommended? I know, but is that part of the, what you have recommended?
Yep.
It is?
Yep, we have.
On number four?
Yeah, extraction and/or storage of soils or other materials are prohibited, motorized vehicles are not allowed.
Okay, all right. I, I just want to compare the two documents, make sure that-
But that is not within outlot Q and S that was proposed.
Yeah, I-
Some of that's not in floodplain, though.
Well, that's- Yeah, 'cause I mean, if you were to touch that bank, and the DNRs would find out, you, you might as well sell your place, 'cause to restore that bank, you have to use of-like soil, and waters, and vegetation, and if you try to find that, um, good luck.
Yeah. Then I'm, I'm okay with, with what they proposed.
Rattling. Oh, jeez.
I may be watching it too, 'cause I wrote down what I think you're gonna say. I have the plat as presented, with the deed restrictions as presented, with a first right of refusal recorded behind the final plat.
On outlots, S and Q.
That's, uh, they didn't present that.
They don't have Q and S.
Oh.
No.
Deed restrictions as presented. Which is A to E. Oh, the, oh, the first right of refusal, okay. Is it, oh, on, okay, on outlot.
There's a, there's a lot inside.
With a final review by the city attorney.
Or review by city attorney prior to council approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to make sure we got our bases covered.
Okay.
Yeah, she'll do it for half price.
Okay. I'm gonna pass this now on you.
Here we go.
There are the four boxes on the, right hand side.
I move to approve the Casel, um-
Preliminary plat.
The Casel preliminary plat provisions as presented, with the deed restrictions as presented, with the first right of refusal recorded behind the final plat on outlets S and Q, to be reviewed by the city attorney prior to city council approval. We have a motion. Give me a second. Second.
And before we ask for a vote, I just want to clarify the deed restrictions as presented by the applicant.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other conversation on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have fun. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a good night.
Do we have any other business discussed?
I don't have any.
Go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. You?
Yeah.
See you later, Chloe.